To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the soon. Tobin.
Here.
Kleiner.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Jean Francois.
Here.
Burr.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
All present. Approval of minutes? We have the minutes of May 5th, 2020, as submitted. So, Alden Massey, second by Alden Green. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Correspondence? Nothing this evening. Okay, for the good of the city, anyone who would like to address the council, they can go on live broadcast. No one at this time would like to speak. Thank you. Okay, reports of the department heads, economic development.
Also have tonight is to remind everybody that the downtown, Middletown Farmers Market starts Saturday, so we will be beginning at 8:00 a.m. Again, all guidelines, social distancing and all kinds of hand washing stations and all that are going to be in place, so we're looking forward to having that activity starting on Saturday. So, from 8:00 to 1:00 p.m., corner of Cottage and Railroad on Erie Way, the Middletown Farmers Market. That's all I have.
Any questions for Maria? Thank you, Maria. DPDW Commissioner.
Good evening, all. Just a reminder, council president all the time talks about the high grass and we're very concerned about it. So far, we've sent over 300 letters of violation, giving people five days to cut the grass, so please be kind enough, help us out, cut the grass, otherwise our crew will come out and they will cut it, and if you were, you know, it's going to cost you some money, so it's, you know, we'll try to avoid that, so please help us out by cutting the grass and taking care of your property. Also a reminder, especially for the people with expired rental permit, again, the landlords or the tenants, please double check on your smoke detectors and carbon monoxide and fire extinguisher, make sure that everything is in order, you know, some exits means of egress in there to be functional, because we have not been inspecting or going inside the houses, and many people have, with rental permit have expired, so we're counting on you to help us out during these tough times. Again, I said that last meeting, and I'm just reminding people again, because it's a matter of life or death, so please pay attention to it and keep them, the batteries updated and functional, and if anything is missing, just put it back up again, please. Across the street in here, you will see Boys has mobilized for the green infrastructure downtown, downtown improvement, parking lot improvement, and Heritage Trail, finally Dulcet Town Road, obviously, the road has been dug up, and right now, actually today, tomorrow, and the day after, they're going to be installing five-foot diameter pipe under the box culvert. Box culvert is going to be the Heritage Trail itself, crossing under Dulcet Town Road. Under the box culvert, we're going to put a five-foot sleeve for the city of Middletown, future installation of outfall sewer. So, we're planning for the future, and instead of digging up the road again and removing the box culvert and so on and so forth, we're putting it now, so in the future, whoever comes after us, he'll be able to put a pipe right through the sleeve in there to replace the existing outfall sewer, because our sewer line right now, from the sewer treatment plant, it goes all the way to the Walker River. It follows the Heritage Trail, design for the work rising is continuing, they're doing value engineering at this time, hopefully we'll see some real movement very soon in terms of bidding out the project. And spring cleanup, as you know, fourth word will start on the June 15th, third, June 22nd, second word will be June 29th, and first word will be July 6th. Again, you put out the stuff, please, you're, just one day, Sunday before we come out and collect it on Monday. And again, keep an eye for people who will come and dump their stuff illegally from outside the city, because it's expensive for us to do this. Any questions?
Any question for Jacob? Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
Police Chief.
It's been a few meetings since I've seen you, I've been in quarantine, not really, but I was watching on video for the last several meetings, just to stay up in tune with whatever's been going on, so even though I wasn't here personally, I was actually watching and paying attention and staying up to speed with everything. So, just to give you a few updates on where we stand as the Middletown Police Department, obviously, the COVID-19 pandemic has impacted us as a department, let alone all the impact that it has on the community. Just want to extend my condolences to everybody in and around our community, our families, our extended families for any losses that may, they may have suffered, either personally, professionally, financially, whatever it may have been. I know it's been tough on a lot of people, and it's really impacted a lot of people I know in all of our personal lives as well. In-house, it did impact me directly with staffing, I ended up with three of my staff members positively testing positive for COVID-19. I have all but one back right now, he's still going through the final treatments, but he's symptom-free right now, we're just trying to get him cleared for the doc, from his doctor to bring him back to work. Right from the onset, we put in a tremendous amount of procedures and protocols to ensure that we maintain the safety and security of our building and the health of our staff, so we believe that we did enough to help protect ourselves, and it minimized the number of people that were infected in our, in our building. On the same note, I'd like to thank the community for all the support that they showed us throughout this pandemic. We were inundated with food, supplies, support, it was amazing to see the outpour of support from our community. Day in and day out, there was people coming in, providing us with additional resources. We had supplies of masks, face shields, gowns, actually, the school, the Middletown School District, did a program for us and actually made face shields on their 3D printers for us, which was absolutely amazing, I thanked them for that. During that pandemic, we did shut down our enforcement efforts a little bit, so in line with that, our call volume was also down, we didn't have as many calls to deal with, slightly down, not as much as we anticipated, but we did see a decline in the call volume. During this time of the pandemic, while we weren't answering as many calls, we did do some additional work, we partnered with the school, assigned officers to do the lunch program, we reallocated our SROs to do that for us, and we also worked with the Parks and Rec Department and the mayor's office with the pickup and delivery of food, and delivered it to the elderly and people of need in our community, which has been very successful, a lot of positive feedback, a lot of thanks to everybody that was involved in that. So, I'd like to quickly just touch on the demonstrations that are taking place nationwide. In response to what happened in Minneapolis last week, it's a horrific incident, for those that were with us yesterday, I openly say that, that's unacceptable, that gave police in general a black eye, a huge black eye, that we've worked hard to overcome those obstacles, but this has really set us back many, many, many years, so we still have a lot of work ahead of us. We did have the demonstration yesterday, for all accounts, was it perfect? I wouldn't say anything's perfect, but it went probably as smooth as we could have had it, had it go. Myself, my team, we put together a plan that we thought was going to be effective, it did work for us for that situation, I can't say it's going to work for every situation, but for the information that we did have on hand, we felt that we had a good plan in place. The event went off fairly smoothly, we had a couple little hiccups here and there, but we adjusted and we worked through them, and we succeeded, I would believe, but I don't want to look at that as like success for us as a police department, because there's still the underlying factor that led us there, that we need to continue to work on, and that's something that I have committed to doing, I started this many years ago, as you all know, with the outreach and building and strengthening the relationships in the community, so that's something I will continue to work on. Just as recent as tonight, I did reach out to the organizers of that event, and we're trying to set up a plan in place to start working together to come up with a solution to move forward, to bridge some more of these gaps. So, with that, I hope that we're moving in the right direction, I'm definitely open to suggestions, ideas, recommendations, as I've said, we are not perfect, we have had bad encounters, we've had bad situations, but we need to learn from them, we need to learn from this, and we need to find a way to move forward and make sure this stuff doesn't happen again. One of the things that I've credited the success of our department with, and the reason I want to bring this up is I'm not sure a lot of people know what we do and where we invest our money and our time, but over the last couple of weeks, I've been asked this quite, quite a few times, or I should, over the last week, what have we done to, to ensure that we don't have these bad encounters? I can't say there's anything that will ensure that we never have these bad encounters, but I could tell you where we have been investing our money, and it's been in the training of our organization, training of our personnel, to interact with our community better, the outreach that we've been doing, all those types of things, but in-house, we took on a program two years ago, it's called procedural justice, it started out as procedural justice, it has recently changed to principal policing, to my knowledge, we are the only department in this area utilizing this training platform, and there's four basic principles to this training platform, and it's not just classroom lecture, it's actually scenario-based, so the officers actually have to go through scenarios as well, but the four principles are voice, we encourage the officers to allow the people they deal with to have a voice, to listen to them, to hear what they're saying, give them that opportunity, to tell their side of a story, to be neutral, to be fair, not to come in with a biased opinion right from the start, to take on a different view of things, to have that neutrality, respectful treatment, that's the golden rule, we hear it all the time about respect, respect goes both ways, but we need to make sure that our officers realize that they have to give respect to get respect, and vice versa. The fourth principle is trustworthiness, which is to bring a fair and transparent process. If we're not trustworthy, we're not going to gain any compliance in our community, we're not going to gain the respect, so those four principles have been the guidance for us to deal with the members of our community over the last four years. We have some other key terms that we utilize throughout the training, such as deposits and withdrawals, and we reference it to a bank account, and we encourage everybody to make deposits and watch your bank account grow as your community being the bank account. And really, the primary objective of the whole training is to show that police actions are lawful and legitimate, because we need to ensure that our community knows that we're doing things for the right reason. So, I just want to bring that up, so people could hear where we are investing our money, the type of training that we are implementing, and the message that we are sending to our officers to better serve our community. So, with that, unless you have any questions, I have nothing. It's hot.
Alden Kleiner?
Thank you, Chief, I just wanted to compliment you for your role yesterday and how that was handled at the demonstration, what was, what was, what was so good about it was hearing all the positive things that were said about the Middletown Police Department, when they talked about the issues with police and policing in general, they said, but not in Middletown. And we heard that again and again from the speakers, the police are here to help us, they're on our side, they've been part of the community, so all your training, everything you've done has been very successful, and I thank you.
I appreciate it, and if I could just comment, I appreciate all those positive comments, and we received many, I actually had one of my dispatchers come in yesterday after the protest, just about in tears, to share with me the phone calls that she received during that protest or demonstration of positive support, and I greatly appreciate it from the community, but like I said, we still have more work to do, and I don't want to be stagnant and think that we're in a good spot, we definitely have to push forward, but thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Chief.
Thanks.
Civil Service.
Yes, quickly, I want to thank the school superintendent, Richard Delmore, and our police chief, Want You, because I had tests scheduled for the 13th, and we didn't have a place to put it, there's too many to put here, and evidently, there's enough construction going on at the schools that I needed some extra help, and I asked the chief to make a telephone call, and because of that call, Mr. Delmore has given us Presidential Park, and most of it, so anyone that is scheduled to take a test on the 13th, you will be getting a letter, but most of it is for the police sergeant and for a police detective, so Chief, thank you, and Mr. Delmore, thank you.
Report the mayor.
Good evening. When I want to congratulate the chief on the principal policing plan that's been put in place over the last few years, when you see the results of yesterday, you recognize the progress that's been made, and I think his words are very accurate, that we also recognize that we have a lot more work to do, especially in the area of police brutality nationwide, the spotlight has been put on it with the murder of George Floyd. Yesterday, we had a demonstration in the city of Middletown, and it was organized by Black Lives Matter, as we know, this term, Black Lives Matter, has become a divisive term in our country, and a lot of people did not understand what the term really meant, and they felt that by saying Black Lives Matter, that you were saying, ignoring that all lives matter, and I think everyone agrees that all lives do matter, that's the basis of, basis of life, all lives do matter, but the Black Lives Matter movement came out of where all of a sudden, there, black lives didn't seem to matter in the area of policing and police brutality, and other social, economic issues also, so if black lives don't matter, then all lives don't matter, then, and that's basically the nutshell of where the term comes from. So, I think the country had a rude awakening over the last week or so, in recognizing that black lives do matter, and there's an agreement on how to move forward with most people, and in our little world here in the city of Middletown, we, as the chief said, the principal policing policies that he had put in place seem to be working, we recognize we have more work to do. And yesterday's demonstration organized by Theologica Monk and Muji Merchant, I think demonstrates the goodwill that the police have built up over the past few years with our community. There was a recognition by many of the people there, and appreciation that the chief of police marched in their protest march, I think that said a lot, in uniform, for all to see. I think the oath of office concept that was taking on the, taken on the steps of the police department yesterday morning, in which the police department reaffirmed their oath and their commitment to uphold the Constitution of the United States for all people, and that was an important part of how we began the day after, after the daily briefing. So, a lot of credit goes out to those who participated. There were speakers, they were very passionate, they were very, in some cases, very animated, and all held their own in regards to getting out information about what's going on in their specific lives, and how this issue of Black Lives Matter has affected them personally, some of them with the fear of, you know, when a police car pulls up behind them, of what's going to happen, and that shouldn't happen to anyone, black, white, but it is happening in the black community nationwide. So, what we're doing, the symbolism of the term Black Lives Matter, I think, took on a new meeting over the last week with a lot of people who are not black, and they have a better understanding of what is going on in the black and brown committee, community, and I think all one needs to do is watch the video, and you get a clearer picture about what is happening, and where that term really comes into your life. We, as I said, we had a pretty significant turnout, nearly 500 people, if you can spot a couple of the councilmen in this picture, that's because the one in the upper left is Mr. Jude Jean Francois Alderman, the bottom left is myself and Mr. Massey, and there were other people there, I know Jerry was there, some could not make it, but all have expressed a desire to participate and show their support, and I think this council has shown their support with the funding in the police department, the commitment, the emails, and the encouragement that you've offered over the past couple of years to all of the outreach programs, when the chief makes a reference to making a deposit into the bank, that deposit is the pop-up barbecues, those deposits are meeting with mothers and fathers when they see that their, when they get a hint that their kid may be hanging around with the wrong people, and having a meeting with the parents and saying, hey, this is what your son or what your daughter is doing, and this is the, what we feel that you should have, you should have, you know, a talk with them, you should try to straighten them out a little bit, not making an arrest, this was all things that are done outside of the, of the cameras, and outside of even your knowledge as council members, the specific workings of the police department, but in general, you are, have an idea what's going on, you have the ability to, to fund these activities, and you have, and you've been encouraging by participating in the crime night out, and all of the relationship issues that we've developed over the years with that community, the black and brown community in Middletown, and all communities, you know, we have a growing Asian community, we have a significant Latino population, but right now, it's the focus is Black Lives Matter, and our message to our residents here is that we agree, black lives do matter, at least, I'm assuming I'm speaking for all of you also, that black lives do matter. The next is the COVID, give you an update briefly, this is the, as of May 28th, I think I have an updated number, Orange County is now 10,498 as of June 1, which is significant, we don't know what the impact of Memorial Day and these demonstrations are going to have on statewide numbers and the climbing of numbers, you see the pictures in New York City, you see the videos in large cities throughout the state, and even here, you know, 500 people gathering, thankfully, I will guarantee you, 99 out of 100 had a mask on, there were a few pictures posed without masks, I was guilty on one of them, where the person I was posing with did not have a mask on, I didn't realize it until I saw the picture, because your mind's not working that way, so I have to be a little bit more cautious myself, but we, we want to make sure that, that all of our people that work for the city do follow the guidelines, and I understand, we all make mistakes too, and we forget sometimes about COVID with everything going on in our lives, when you run out of your car and run into a store, we did have a complaint about a, a city employee in a store that said mask, must wear mask, didn't wear a mask, and he had a uniform on, it wasn't a police uniform or a fire uniform, but it had markings that identified them as a city Middletown employee, and that, we did take, we do take it serious, and to the person who made the complaint, the person has been counseled, apologized, and will all do better, and hopefully, the public will all do better in that area, but the, hopefully the trends will continue to go downward, if we do get a little bump, then we'll, I'm sure, our policy has been to follow the governor's guidance on all of these issues, and we'll continue to do so. The, if you've been to City Hall up until recently, the, all five doors into the building have been locked, in lockdown, we are now, the lobby area between the police station and the court, a police station and City Hall is now open, because the court is back in, not in session, but the court is taking filings, and they do operate their window now, so access into that lobby area, I can give you an idea where I'm heading with that is to, and what appears to be the most popular, most prudent measure, I think, is to go to a single entry into, into the building, and into the main building would be the side door into that lobby area, but you have a front and you have a back door that would bring you into the court, to the police, and to access to the police intercom also. So, we're looking at that, work is going to begin shortly on the skylight repair, that would include a new floor over there, I have economic development talking about doing some historical photos and that to make it more attractive as visitors, because that will be their new entrance into City Hall, there are some who don't like it, of closing the front door of City Hall, but when you go to a single point entry, that point must be handicap accessible, and, you know, we will probably be doing some type of employee check at the very minimum of temperatures in the morning, we'll be ordering the equipment, Chuck Mitchell and, and Maria have been working on the reopening plan, and that appears to be something that we're going to include in that, so that would apply to Alderman also, and myself included, your first time in the building during the day, you'll have to go through the scanner, we'll check your body temperature, if you're 100.4 or more, you'll be turned away and told to go home and get some rest. We, we're putting together a plan how we're going to address it with the public, and we are also looking at more things where we can reduce the amount of people that come into City Hall with drop boxes and things of that nature, so we'll continue to put together those plans, so the idea, at least in the, in the short term, and the short term means until COVID is over, we need to change the way we do business, we need to restrict access into the building, and we will also need to have people be able to come to City Hall for whatever needs they have. This would include the public hearings, as you know, we're on virtual now, virtual town hall, trying to get more people to participate, we will be resuming planning board meetings and ZBA meetings, so that we can get our economy going locally and taking more actions in that area, so stay tuned, and we'll have more to follow for the council. This next is a, as you know, our city has been devastated with COVID-19 as a high-density area with a working population, that population are primarily people who work in warehouses, people who work in supermarkets, hospitals, nursing homes, that's the general activity of the majority of city of Middletown residents is working, and many of those businesses that they're working at have a high exposure rate, therefore, we have the second highest COVID positive rate in the county, and the Middletown Walk Hill area is matched by the Newburgh, Town of Newburgh, Town of New Windsor area for, you know, some very high per capita numbers. Don't be fooled so much by those numbers either, because when you get into the per capita map that is on, I, let me go back to that one slide there, when you look at this map here, the darker the blue, the higher the per capita cases, positive cases are, but as white is the lowest, so you see a lot of different shades of blue in there, there's three different shades, the lighter the blue, and then you have the medium type, or it's four different shades, it looks like, and then as it goes up the ladder, we're in the top there with the Walk Hill area, and we want to make sure that we bring that curve down here locally also, and the only way to do that is by testing. So, we have also been involved in a program to distribute masks and sanitizing cream when we get it, sanitizing lotion when we get it from the county, we are continuing to do that to apartment complexes, and we've been doing it now for a couple of weeks. The county had a successful mask giveaway last week at Thrall Library Parking Lot, and we've had some testing, through Middletown Medical, I know, has made some testing available, and now we're doing, partnering in a way, we're, we're not the sponsor of it, but we are involved with the Cornerstone Health Center in regards to providing COVID-19 antibody testing. The dates are up there, I think it's Thursday, June 4th, Tuesday, June 9th, and Thursday, June 11th, it will be at Thrall Park, you can make an appointment, there's a number on there, all this information will be on our Facebook and all our social media, Facebook and our website, if you have any questions, you can call that number, this is not being done by the city, our participation is facilitating, location, advertising, and promoting, and I want to thank Cornerstone for putting our little logo up there with them, but the brunt of this work is by Cornerstone, and it is something that is necessary in a community of 28,000 people with five square miles, within five square miles, so just to get a better idea of some of the efforts that we're collaborating with other agencies, not only the county, the state, but also some of the healthcare agencies in our, in our area. Middletown and Mid Hudson is open for reopened and phase one, some people have been confused because they're looking at upstate New York, we've always viewed ourselves, I guess, as upstate New York, but we are no longer upstate New York, we are the Mid Hudson, and in the Mid Hudson region, which goes from Westchester all the way up to, close to Albany, I think Hudson, Hudson, New York, I think is the northernmost part, we're in phase one, that includes Conover. Uh, that includes construction, agricultural forestry, fishing, hunting, retail, that's curbside retail, manufacturing and wholesale trade. Um, so we're anticipating if there's no bump with Memorial Day and, um, and based on what we've seen recently, that, um, we'll be going into phase two, hopefully sometime next week. That's the projected date, but it's not the actual date. So be careful. If you're a business that requires a license from any local or state agency and you open like that crazy guy did in Newburgh or the stupid people did in Monroe with their barroom, um, we will report you to the task force. Um, we will participate in any way we can to prosecute your license and any other criminal complaint that the district attorney would like to, um, uh, follow through on. But the fact that you might not get a criminal complaint does not mean you won't get a liquor referral if you're a barroom or restaurant, or you won't get a, any other action taken against you. Even a barber shop, if you have a barber's license, those things also can be addressed through state licensing. So use your head. We have, um, hopefully a week to go, little over a week to go before we enter phase two. Follow the directions that are going to be on the, the guidelines and the requirements for developing a plan and following the, the guidelines from the state of New York. What we're doing in the city as we prepare for, um, phase two, um, we're looking at our, um, some of the ways we can assist our local business people. Uh, so throughout the city, we're an inch away from getting approval from HUD for the small business loan program. Um, I signed the final documents, I believe, um, this morning, an amendment that HUD required. Uh, Maria is hoping for a very quick turnaround by HUD. And once that's approved, I believe we will be able to utilize that $160, $160,000 in federal funds to be distributed in the form of a small business loan with zero interest and deferred payments to many of our local businesses who qualify. Um, we're going to reduce the qualifications such as, um, credit checks. So if you don't have the best credit, but you're credit worthy, you're going to qualify. We're not trying, we're trying to help businesses reopen. These are federal monies that are going to be designated specifically for business assistance. Uh, some of the other things we're doing, as you can see the sign here, is this was put together by the pit district, is curbside pickup signs. Uh, many of the retail and restaurants in downtown are relying on curbside pickup. Um, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, um, it wasn't a problem picking up anything in downtown Middletown because it was dead. It was, there was nobody here. Uh, so, but business has been picking up and traffic has picked, has picked up and, uh, government offices will be reopening, so more people will be in and around. Uh, so, uh, the business, uh, the downtown business improvement district recommended that about at least one or two, like, one or two locations per block, I think it's at least two locations per block, that we would install these curbside pickup signs and they would be utilized only for a business to pick up the, the, um, products or the customer to pick up the products, call in and have their, uh, food delivered or their package delivered, uh, to the curb. As you know, um, Ida's on the, um, on the corner of north, the old Pride Lux Drugs, uh, they, they've remained open as an essential business and, uh, they've done quite a few, um, curbside deliveries. So it's not just food and, uh, food and beverage industry that's looking at this. It's all businesses that are opened in phase one, all the central businesses and all businesses that will be opening in phase two. Uh, this will, um, falls into place with what happened today, and that is the closing of half of the James Street lot and the, uh, commencing of the downtown revitalization initiative, um, largest project, basically the final project, which will be the, uh, all of the parking areas and the areaway lot in the back here. The, we did, um, uh, it's a little bit of a short notice. We did get notified yesterday that the contractor would start mobilizing this morning. I would like to, we want them to, um, go in now while business is slow downtown, while motor vehicle is closed and get their start. So, um, there's going to be a, a little difficulty with parking downtown. There's a lot of alternate lots. They will be posted on our economic development page. We'll try to do a better job on our website. So when they, if someone goes to our website, then it'll pop up immediately and we will have the, uh, we will have a short-term parking problem, but the project should move quicker with fewer, um, with fewer people in the downtown area. Uh, this is the lot as of this, this afternoon. Uh, boys are starting to move in their equipment. You've probably seen Orange and Rockland working in the lights to move some of those poles. So the, um, the, um, project is moving into its final phase, the DRI. Uh, the next is the, um, some people call and ask, well, I don't know what's going on. And I tell them Joe Massey says that to me every day. He doesn't know what's going on. But there is a, there's a, there's a very simple mechanism that you can put on your phone or, um, or either get a, a call. You can get a, um, well, it's Nixle and it's, it's optimized user registration, it's called. And you have five ways to register. You could sign up on nixle.com. You can text, uh, a zip code, the 888-777. Um, uh, text your zip code to 888-777. You can text your custom keyword to that same number. You can do a web widget or download the Nixle app. If you have any difficulty, call the community development office. I'm sure Eileen or Caitlin can walk them through it. Um, I don't know if the police department's offering that, but I, I, it's for, you can register on different levels also. You will get a, some people want to know what's happening in the police cars went by my neighborhood here. What's going on? If it's something, um, of a serious dispatch, I think, um, it's, it's not immediate dispatch, but if there's like a street, street closing because of, um, a water, water main break, you'll get that because the, you'll see police cars closing the street. You might think something else has happened, but then you'll get the notification that it was a water main break. So the, there are other ways to stay in touch with us in the city and you can follow us on social media. And there was many different, um, ways on Instagram. Um, we have four accounts, I guess, on Instagram and four Facebook accounts, um, all dealing with the regular, uh, daily information of the city and sometime, some cases multiple times during the day. And also the city website. And then you can also sign up for the DPW or the, um, I think it comes out of Jacob's office, a weekly mailing that will give you some ideas of what the city plans are. Um, utility tear ups, everything should be coming on and giving you the, um, information. Doesn't cost anything. It's free and it's very, uh, very useful. Middletown Reservoir Trails. Look closely at the middle slide. You will see that the print is now white. You will also see that we spell the reservoir correctly. I want to thank Mr. Massey for recognizing his error and proofreading the reservoir sign and getting this corrected.
Yeah.
And that the, um, the company did do it for free. They did replace it and that's due to Mr. Massey's, um, well, you know, I don't have to say anymore. But the other two slides you can see are the parking lot at Van Duser. And this is almost on a daily basis. The weekends are very, uh, very packed. I, I got an email or a text message from Dr. Johnson over the weekend who was riding his bike up there and he said it's, it's a huge success, um, that the, uh, many people, not just Middletown people, people from all over the area are enjoying this property. And the most important part, they're taking care of it. Um, I get a report daily from our parks department who's responsible for cleaning the trails, cleaning the parking area, emptying the garbage. We are putting in some bear-proof, um, uh, garbage cans, uh, so that we don't have to worry about, um, the animals getting into them. But we get a daily report and, uh, the, it's very positive. Some days there's nothing on the trail to pick up. Uh, we're doing a better job marking, uh, the trails. We had some feedback from users that, uh, there were a little confusion at the intersections. We also added, um, the degree of difficulty to the trails, to the trail maps. Um, and we're doing, um, uh, I guess the blue trail is a little bit more difficult than some of the other trails and, uh, we're responding to some of the handicap access issues. Uh, for those that are watching, Abramson Road and Highland Lake Road is the easiest and most handicap accessible. Uh, that road does have, that inside trail does have pavings on it, art millings on it. So it's easy to, uh, easier to move a wheelchair through. Um, we're going to continue to move forward with, um, the Mapes Road handicap accessibility, which is in the middle of the lake at some point. We were not successful on our grant, so we were unable to do that project or part of the project, but we'll continue to seek some state reimbursements on that. But the, um, the trails are being enjoyed. This is the ribbon cutting. Many of you were there. Uh, I know older woman, Ram Cassoon and, um, Jerry and I was there and, uh, Andrew I know was there and I don't know, Tom, is that you in the picture too?
No, I couldn't make it.
Oh. I thought that was you when I followed left on the picture. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I, I got bad eyes. I'm sorry. I'm a chubby guy myself, so, so, yeah, so we, we got to have fun sometimes, right? But these are the picture of the lake, the trails, the ribbon cutting. Um, we did have our first, uh, you know, we made an investment of $10,000 with Howells into some emergency equipment that would be utilized, um, in case of an emergency on the trails. And we did have our first, um, incident in which Howells, I'm not going to say his name, but he's a former city employee. Uh, he did slip and, um, from what I hear, he, he found it to be a blessing. He had to be removed by, um, uh, by the ambulance, uh, and by the, uh, emergency vehicle, taken to Orange Regional. And they found that he had to stay for a couple of days because he, they found he might have had something with his heart going on. So the, um, but the, he's okay. Um, and he had a little accident on the, by slipping on the trail, but, uh, threw his back out, but the, um, but it shows you the investment that we made in that equipment and the planning that it went to the security and, uh, on that trail all made sense. And so we're thankful that Howells was able to respond so quickly also. This is prepared, this is a video prepared by Joseph Adipietro. He works for our parks department and just wanted to show you our residents just a little bit. He's a high school student, Middletown High School. And, uh, I'll talk when my picture's up there and I'll shut up.
Welcome to Middletown Reservoir Trails, our region's new hiking and biking trails. Middletown has opened up its 1,250-inch road share.
Oh.
Explore nature like never before and maybe discover the old log cabin. Then go for a hike on over eight and a half miles of wood roads and trails. Experience scenery like never before. Just minutes from downtown Middletown.
Welcome to the city of Middletown Reservoir Trails. These trails have been closed for over 100 years. They've been only used by caretakers for the reservoir for the city of Middletown. We are opening them up to the public for, uh, walking, biking and hiking.
Thank you for watching and we can't wait to see you at Middletown Reservoir Trails.
So I want to thank Joseph, uh, Adi, Adi, Adipietro, right Maria? How do I say it? I'm close enough. Adipietro. All right. I'm learning. Yeah, Listofano. I've heard that before, haven't I?
Where? Where'd you hear?
Where did I hear it? Chief will remind me. But, um, and then the last slide, uh, deals with something we're going to continue to harp on. And, um, I had the opportunity to speak at, at the, um, protest yesterday. And, um, one of the parts that I focused on also was the, the way you bring about change is protest is a voice. Um, and peaceful protest will really get you far, but it'll only get you so far. And that's second step is not violence. That second step is participation and voting. And the only way we bring about change is to vote. And, um, so we need two things and we also, we need resources and we need people to register to vote. So in order to get resources into a city or into any community, you need to fill out the census. All federal state aid, sales tax distribution, and I'll say it at every meeting until this is closed, is based on the census. So as we move forward, if, even if we have an increase in tax ratables and development in the city, if we lose population, or not lose population, if we don't count everyone who's here, we will lose funding on the state, federal and local level. And that could be disastrous in many ways. Locally to the city, it will be disastrous for funding our police and fire operations, our sanitation operation and all of those good things that we do in the city. We get over, well over $2 million in direct aid from the state of New York called AIM. It's called the, uh, Aid and Municipality Funding. Uh, we get, um, well over $10 million in sales tax distribution. That's based solely upon the, um, distribution of, between the three cities, the allocation of sales tax between Middletown, Port Jervis and Newburgh. And that's based on population. So we lose population, counting, not population, because the population's still going to be here and we're going to require to provide services, but we're not going to have the funding to provide those services unless we raise taxes significantly. So use your head. Um, since we started our campaign, we've made significant progress regarding, uh, we are now over 50% in response rate. The state average was 54. About six weeks ago, there was about a 13 to 14 percent gap. Now we've closed that gap down to 10%. Count everybody in your house, whether a newborn baby or 90 years old, as in my case, I have both. Um, you got to count everybody and make sure that everyone is on that list. It takes, some people have told me it's less than five minutes. Um, I had a lot of names to type, so I, it took me about 10 minutes. But it's worth it. It's going to be worth it for our community and that is step one. And, and it gives you a chance to be counted. And that's what I tried to emphasize yesterday with the people who were at the protest. You know, a lot of people had different messages and my message is about Middletown and what we can do to move forward. The chief had his message. He took questions and, um, standing in the middle of the crowd and took every one of the questions that they wanted to ask. My message was focused on voting and the role that, um, people will have in this community to bring about change. The only way you bring about change is by voting. And you're not voting for a color, you're not voting for an ethnicity, you're voting for someone who is advocating your position. So, um, it's important, it's important to realize that. We, um, um, I asked a couple of the people that were there, people that came up and spoke to me, young people, and I said, are you registered to vote? How old are you? I'm 18, I'm 19. No, I don't want to vote. And I said, well, then you probably, you know, you can make your voice heard here, but your effectiveness of your voice is going to be diminished as time moves on. So, uh, hopefully, um, uh, that people recognize that. They will recognize that, uh, our voter registration numbers for a city of 28,000, our turnout numbers are not very good. Um, in a presidential year, uh, if we're around maybe 50%, which is better than a non-presidential year, but those years our turnouts are horrible. So, uh, in order for Middletown to have a bigger voice, in order for individuals to have a bigger voice, you need to register and then you need to vote. So that was that message. As far as my last point is tomorrow night is the, um, there was a scheduled second protest that was scheduled at Fancher Davich Park to begin there. That has been postponed and canceled at this time. So, um, we're going to, as the chief said, we're going to continue to meet with the organizers in the future and see, uh, what we can do better as a community. He's looking at it from the police side. We'll look at it from the community side. We talked about jobs. We talked about, um, employment opportunities, fire, police, city workers and, and explained, um, uh, we have to do a better job at articulating to people, how do you get a job in city government? How do you become a police officer? How do you become a fireman in, in, in city government? How do you become a fireman in city government and Orange County government? And we'll do a better job at that. Maria will be planning. I spoke with Bishop Rollins from the Interfaith Council. I don't know if he's the representative, but he's on the Interfaith Council. We're going to be organizing a Zoom, or not a Zoom, a town hall meeting with the ministers and to get some ideas from them about what they're looking forward to, and also what they're looking forward to on reopening, what they would like us to support. As you know, a letter went out from the region, from mayors and county executives, requesting that churches be opened up to 25% capacity. I did not sign on to it. I was notified an hour before the letter was being sent out. That doesn't mean I oppose it, but it also means I don't like getting something an hour before and asking to sign it without consulting with the people who are impacted by it, and that would be the churches. So we're going to have this meeting, we're going to get some feedback from them, and then I could do my own letter at that point, if necessary. Any questions? Alden Burr?
The second half of the tax bills came out, Mayor?
Yes.
Can they, did the city set up where they could pay it online? Did they ever fix that problem?
I believe it is fixed. I will check with, I will check with the finance office in the morning to make sure. We were trying to work out, I thought it was the water bills that were being paid by...
Well, the water bill can get paid, but tax bills, the first time, couldn't be paid.
Right, and we're trying to work that out with the vendor to, there was a, some communities that accept it put a surcharge on, 3% to 4% or up to 5% to cover the administrative fees. Don is working with a company now that would reduce that significantly to allow us to offer it to all people without any huge penalty to the city. I don't know if that's been finalized yet, but just to, also on billing, the water bills, we're accepting the payment during the four-month period without penalty and interest. So if you haven't paid your water bill, you have more time. You can pay it in partial payments during that fourth period, that period. So if your bill's $200, you want to pay $100 now, pay $100 next month, you can also do that. But I'll check on that tomorrow. Aldman Kleiner?
Yes, thank you. Mayor, do we have any, and maybe I should have asked Jacob, but are there any authorized boats on the reservoirs now?
No.
Are we doing any copper salt liner? Okay.
No, there should be no boating on the reservoir, except for...
We did hear a report of a boat on, but I...
Oh, there could be the, could be the reservoir watchmen then.
There is copper salt treatment.
Yeah, or the treatments could be.
Well, that's what I was asking, whether we're doing any treatment.
Yeah, I don't get involved in the daily stuff, but I thought you were referring to any boats allowed, public boats. There's no public boating on the reservoir.
Right.
The only ones that would be allowed are the, this case, the copper treatment, or the reservoir watchmen, of which we have three. One is horseback, though, and the other is, the other two, I think, are, do go out in the boat.
Okay. And also, Middletown, do we have a number on the number of COVID deaths in Middletown? I just don't seem to be able to find that anywhere.
No.
People have asked me.
They have not given us the COVID deaths. All we get is the...
Positive cases.
Positive, and then confidentially, we get high number of cases on certain streets, so that the, they can come in and do some targeting education with the Orange County Health Department. So that information can't be shared with anyone, we're sworn to secrecy on that for confidentiality purposes. But we do, we do get some additional information, more than I share with you, but on regards to deaths, no, we don't get that, I don't get it at this point. I can inquire to see if it's available.
It's also HIPAA violation.
On the...
On a death.
On a death, yeah, okay.
Now, well, we constantly do the update on how many have died in Orange County from COVID, so if you break it down to how many have died in Middletown of COVID, there's no HIPAA violation that I can see, but...
I could tell you on one thing, that when the violate, when the notices started coming out, that, you know, at the beginning of this, they were not telling you how many cases were in each community, and a lot of us were pushing for that. Most of it was focused on Kerry's Joel. It was by county before, and everyone thought Kerry's Joel was the big problem. Kerry's Joel has not, has less of a problem than we do, less of a problem than Newburgh does, and close to other communities, and probably, I don't know what they were on this chart here, but, no, I don't have that information. But, but the point being is, we were pushing for the information because we wanted to know what's going on in our communities.
Right.
Initially, the numbers were inflated because the, they only come in by zip code. So if you're from Rockland County and you got tested in Orange County, you're not going to be counted as an Orange County positive, and vice versa. Then, when they opened the station up, the testing station up in Bear Mountain Park, in Herriman Park, the, there was some confusion over numbers. All of those numbers went into Rockland County, and then they had to back them out manually, and it took a lot of man-hours. So the excuse at the time was that even when you break them, pull them out of Rockland County and put them into orange, then 10940 zip code is impacted. And by that is only half of, for example, half of the Middletown School District is Middletown, the other half is Walk Hill. 10941 is Town of Walk Hill, but it's Middletown. So I think it was a lot of manual work, and their staffing levels between their testing and all of that didn't, up to that point, they were not able to do that. And I want to touch on one other thing that, if you, once you're done with your question regarding the comments made by the Washington Heights Fire Chief before I, before I get off, so, but does that answer your question?
That answers, I've had people ask me, and I said, I just said, "I don't know." My one other question is, in opening the farmer's market, you know, we have Erie Way as one way. That's the most violated one-way street we have in the city. People constantly come in from Cottage and come down the wrong way, and I know we don't, we're not big on enforcement because we don't want to discourage people, but it just is a disaster waiting to happen, especially with the buses, if they're still going through.
Well, I'm not aware that the police are giving any extra consideration to people going the wrong way on a one-way street. I think if they see it, they issue a ticket. The farmer's market is going to be expanded this year physically because of the restrictions that are being placed on us by the state of New York in order to operate it safely. One way in, one way out, counting people in, counting people out, limiting the number of people, hand washing stations, all those good things. But the physical layout, separating of farmers from one another, farmers, customers can't take their own product, they have to be bagged with someone wearing gloves and, you know, and masks are going to be required, so it required a bigger footprint. But the chief is here, I'm sure he'll hear you on the one-way stuff, but to my knowledge, there is no get-out-of-jail-free card for going the wrong way on a one-way street.
Okay.
And he's heard you, and I'm sure he'll, he'll address it at some point in the future with his patrol people.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, anybody have any questions? And I'll get into the...
Go ahead.
There was unfortunate post, not unfortunate, stupid post by the Fire Chief of the Washington Fire District on Facebook today. And first to address the post, it was, I have it here somewhere, let me see, I don't want to misquote him. I thought I had it.
Was it Dexter?
Yeah, I thought I had, but it doesn't matter. You can go on and see it on Blaze Gomez's Facebook page. But initially, the comments that were made were inappropriate, inaccurate, and they were derogatory to the black community and the African-American community all over. One would think, after making such a comment, that he would have had enough sense to apologize and to, and ask for forgiveness for making such a stupid public comment, and an evil comment, especially in light of what is happening in our communities. The reference was made to the Middletown protesters yesterday, and I'm going to say the comment that he made, because people should know what it is. He referred to the protesters as pavement apes, and made a comment about lock and load, and he's ready. Those who know the term, and you don't have to know the term to know it's derogatory against African-Americans. A lot of people immediately jumped on him. I believe he did take it down eventually. He was interviewed by the media, and he was, the supervisor of the Town of Walk Hill is involved. He is the chief of the Washington Heights Fire District, and this is where our problem comes in, how the City of Middletown got involved. The initial reporting on Facebook by Blaze Gomez included a reference to the, to the Fire Chief as a Middletown Fire Chief. The rest of the article was accurate, in which they referred to Washington Heights Fire District Supervisor Dondato, but she referred to it as the Middletown, New York Fire Chief. That started volume of calls to the Police Department, Facebook messages to us. I spoke with, I called Frank Dondato, he was in a meeting. I spoke with Lou Ingrascia, the Commissioner, Public Works out there. Lou told me that they are trying, they're going to be addressing it. The supervisor immediately condemned the comments. Unlike the City of Middletown, the Fire District is not under the supervisor or the town's control, but there's going to be a lot of anger, and should be a lot of anger, about his comments and a lot of condemnation. So he was interviewed on Cable 6, not on camera, but on phone, and rather than back down, he doubled down. And a very stupid thing to do. He compounded his stupidity with another stupid comment. So there's a lot of Facebook chatter, people thought it was us, Middletown. How did you do something so nice yesterday, and then today you slap us in the face in allowing someone to be the Fire Chief of your community and make comments like that? We had another comment from a lady from Chester about a sticker that was on a fire truck that referred to the George Wallace comment of shooters, looters, then shooters, and the, ended up, when we dug down on that and contacted the person who called me, she called her friend from Chester who said she saw it, and it ended up being on a Beacon fire truck. My point being is, these things are spreading on social media, and they're spreading, somehow we're in the middle of some of it, and some of the good work yesterday was initially diminished by these comments. So we want the public to know that we condemn it, we condemn his comments. I believe he should resign, resign immediately if he hasn't done so prior to this, prior to our meeting starting. The Town of Walk Hill should take as strong action as they can to not only condemn his action, but to remove him, if possible, from his position of responsibility. When you wear a uniform, you represent the community or the organization that you're wearing that uniform for, and he has discredited it. He made other comments that are really hurtful to a lot of people, and it really is a sad situation that he continued to, to support his own stupid comments. So to the public, this was not Middletown. Close to Middletown, yes, we condemn it. We have notified Walk Hill that we, and they condemn it also, the Walk Hill representatives. So hopefully, there's going to be some action, and we just hope that, that one person doesn't damage the effectiveness of our march yesterday. Mr. Massey?
Joe, people may not know who Blaze Gomez is, so...
Blaze is with Channel 12, thank you for clarifying that. She's a reporter with Channel 12. Blaze's position was, when I spoke to her, asking for a correction, was that, well, its address is Middletown, New York. I said, "Well, half of Walk Hill's address is Middletown, New York. My sister lives in Mount Hope, and her address is Middletown, New York. These are postal addresses, these are not community addresses." I did put up a posting on Facebook in response to some people. One guy was in there tears when he sent me a thing and said, you know, "After yesterday, I had so much hope, and then now I see that you let this guy say this, and you're not responding." I said, "Well, I did respond to other people's comments, and I did call for his resignation, and, but it's not Middletown." And, but the fact that it's not Middletown doesn't excuse us from not having a voice and calling for his removal from a very important office." And so that's, that's all I have to report tonight.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. For Sir Waldman, Alden Burr?
Not from you.
Aldman John Francois?
Yes, good evening. Fortunately, I didn't have a chance to make it to the ribbon cutting for the reservoir, but my wife and I went back the next day, and they did a beautiful job. Whoever was involved, I took my hat out to them, and the markers was a little discredit because it's easy to get lost in there. And thank God for some of the painting markers that they had, and we was able to find our way out. But it's beautiful, and I think it was overdue, you know, and as a community of Middletown, I think we all would enjoy that, and other people from other areas also. Also, chief, I seen you and your department in action before, and this is what I saw yesterday, it's not new to me, but it's new to a lot of people in this area. We go as far as back as the summer, you had pop-up barbecues, night out against crime, and the last incident that happened yesterday. And my hat goes out to you and your department. Guys did a wonderful job. I'm delighted to be part of this community, and I was proud to see our community came out and be very respectful for this march that happened yesterday. And I think that should be a stepping stone for other areas to follow what we did yesterday. It was beautiful, and I'm delighted by that. And far as the incident that happened with Mr. Floyd, it was horrible, horrible, horrible incident. I hope to God none of our kids and ourselves would never witness anything like that again. But like my grandma always say, things don't happen by accident. What are the chances that we are in a pandemic? And most of our young folks out of school, a lot of people are not working, but when you look around what's happening, and it's, it's a lot of young folks that's actually taking control of this situation, and I think they're the one that's going to bridge the gap of what's been happening. And I've seen this thing happen over and over again, but usually it's a march for a day or two, and no one talks about it again. But I think what's going on right now is make, it's going to make a big impact because there's a lot of young folks that's getting involved. I think they're the one that's going to make the difference, and I'm glad to see that, but I'm sad by what I saw. I mean, I'm not a tough guy, but as a human being, if I was in that position, if I was anywhere near that, I think I might have been arrested or got shot, because I don't see how anybody could sit there and watch this thing, you know? You witnessed that, and not to do anything about it. And I hope to God, none of us, it seems like to me humanity is losing its, it's, it's, it's just, I don't know, the whole world is, is just nonsense. I hope that's something humanity would never experience again. And deep in my heart, I think this is going to be the last straw. I think we're going to move on from that. I think things are going to be different from there. I hope to God this doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Aldman Kleiner?
Thank you. This has been the perfect storm with COVID, and people cooped up for months, and then suddenly you get summer temperatures, and there's something going on, and there's real anger, and it's understandable. Again, I want to thank the chief, I want to thank the mayor, everyone in Middletown. Yesterday's demonstration was what a demonstration should be, and people notice, and they hear the opinion. And my feeling at the time, and really now, is if they would limit the protests to the daytime, and start a sunshine movement, and keep them in the daytime, like ours was a daytime protest. The looting and the... The looting and the hijacking of the movement, and the people who use it for their own reasons, and the wrong reasons, that happens at night. So, I, I hope somebody catches on and realizes that you could stop it simply by doing that. When you see people firebombing and attacking police vehicles in New York City, and police officers, and you realize, is it, I think it's over 40 now, but the number of New York City police officers who have died from COVID, trying to keep that city safe, trying to keep the, the nurses and the first responders and the doctors, and trying to deal with the pandemic, it's, it's really heartbreaking. So, I, I do, I do hope it moves on, I hope it moves in a positive direction. I certainly don't like what I hear nationally from our leadership. Our leadership, I did get another one of these cards today, I've gotten a few of them. It says, "President Trump's Corona Guideline for America." And you know what that's worth. There's nothing on here about wearing a mask. It says, "If you're old, stay home." Well, next Friday is D-Day, it's the 76th anniversary. I was two and a half months old during D-Day. I don't remember it, but I certainly heard a lot about it, and it's, it's something we should all be aware of. And, and bless those veterans who have paid an awful price from the pandemic. I was listening to the little bit of the school board debate tonight, and I'll remind people, and it's before our power blinked on and off, and knocked it off from my computer, so, but I think I had heard enough, but there are four candidates for three seats, and there's a major budget vote that I hope passes, because the alternatives are not better. But that's next week. I have not gotten my ballot in the mail. It's only vote by mail, but I will tell people what the school board has reminded people, that there is a drop box at the Board of Education. So, if, they have to receive that ballot by, by June, I guess June 9th, next Tuesday. So, if you get it on Friday, don't get it on Friday or Sat, till Saturday, or something like that, and don't think it's going to get there in time, you can go and drop it in their, in their drop box, and it'll save them the postage, too, so, you save them a few cents. The reservoir trails, it's a wonderful idea, and I, I didn't speak, I had the chance at the end, but I couldn't remember the third water commissioner's name, and so I wasn't going to do it. But, we didn't give credit to Mr. Wilcox, Mr. Madden, Mr. Matthews, the people who, those were the first three waterworks, water commissioners in Middletown. But the people whose vision acquired that land, the Cox Farm, and I'll try and do a history of that in our next, in our next Historical Society newsletter. But, it was their vision to have a reservoir, and they built mostly by hand, shovels and digging it out, and then kept acquiring land, and, and 1866 was the Enabling Act that allowed it to happen. And they kept revising it as we acquired more land and more reservoirs, and that was farmland, so it was barren, and I'll try and put a picture in that shows them planting all those trees. So, those are our forefathers, who always stepped forward and put their money where their mouth was to get the railroad here, to get us our reservoirs. You know, to, to put Middletown on the map, I, I want to thank them for our reservoir trails, because without them, we wouldn't have it. And, just voting, that's the thing I kept saying yesterday at the rally, but I didn't, I wasn't going to speak, but as much as I could, I would just shout out, "And vote." So, voting and registering for the census, that's how you change things in America. That's how you change policy. And, boy, I hope that message stays strong. So, that's it. Thank you.
Alderman Conso.
Good evening. I'll apologize for reading, but I am no Dr. Johnson, and I just can't speak that eloquently on my own, I need to plan. So, I just wanted to say that, you know, this year's been, we're not even six months in, and it's been a bit of a running disaster, one after another. As a nation, we faced a lot, the loss of family and friends, the loss of our way of life, being social, hugging our friends, gathering together, and now, here we are again. It was only a few short years ago that we had a No Place for Hate rally downtown, and maybe a couple of years before that, that we had the rally to support our LGBTQ communities. And round and around we go. I am a mom of four children, and they are not white. I have known white privilege my whole life. I have had the benefit of not experiencing discrimination beyond that which I have endured as a female, but I know the world that I am preparing my children for. I know that their experience will not be mine. The day they leave the shelter of my home, I will fear for them, and I will worry. And in 2020, here we are again, watching men and women treated as threats on the basis of nothing more than the color of their skin. I am raising my children to speak up for things that they believe in, I'm raising them to not stay silent or be afraid, but I will worry for them and all the people who live on the other side of privilege. I also work with law enforcement. I've spent many years handling the reports and files and footage of more than 30 law enforcement agencies across this country, and I have seen these men and women who go to work every day and put their lives on the line for the communities that they serve. I lost two of those officers in the last few years, and lost, who lost their lives in the line of duty. And I've also had the honor of working with the Middletown Police for the past 10 years, as a member of this council, as an active member of Neighborhood Watch, and as the organizer for the city's Night Out Against Crime for many years. And this police department, what you all saw yesterday on the steps of the PD is what I have seen in the members of this department every day. Many of these men and women have become my friends, and all of them are people that I admire. They serve this community with integrity and compassion. They come to our events, our schools, our activities, our fundraisers, and they come to our aid when we call for them. And I believe this is a world without hope. This is not an obstacle that cannot be overcome. Our community is diverse and vibrant, and we are served by a police department that cares about its people. We and other departments that we have seen nationwide stepping up can set the example for everyone else. The acts of one do not define the character of all, and that applies to law enforcement, black people, white people, politicians, immigrants, and I could keep going. I would just like to take this moment to say that I stand in solidarity against police brutality and injustice, and I would also like to thank the Middletown Police Department for being who they are and for showing us all that we can do better. That is all.
Alderman Johnson.
Well done, Alderman Rampe soon. The mayor just wanted me to remind you, he just got a text that the fire chief in question has been removed from his position. So, not because of what he said two minutes ago.
No. Not in response to...
Yeah, the reservoir, reservoir trails, yeah, I did, I did text the mayor, parking lot was full on Sunday, 11:30 in the Van, the Van Duser lot. I was riding my hybrid bicycle. I will tell you that the hiking trails are not necessarily conducive to bicycles, but if I was 30 years old and ran a mountain bike, I might look at it another way. But, hopefully, we'll get the maps up soon. I was only asked one question, but I was asked it many times by older people, people with strollers with their kids in them, people walking their dogs, groups of teenagers, where's the lake? So, you really can't describe where the lake is if you're on the blue trail at the juncture of the white trail, so hopefully, the maps will be out there soon. As for the issues here in Middletown yesterday, if I read the paper correctly today, it said passionate and peaceful. It doesn't really get better than that, and I, I'm grateful to both the participants and law enforcement. I think I've gotten to know Chief well over the years, that he typically deflects praise, and that's what makes him a good leader, but that does not mean that the praise is not well-founded, so you might want to rethink your position on that someday. The bigger issue, the bigger issue. You know, the embers of racial injustice have been smoldering in this country since anybody in this room can remember, because that's what we've learned to deal with and to sometimes accept. And then George Floyd enters the picture, we know a lot about how he died, we don't really know too much about how he lived. But I think he started his day like we did, brushed his teeth, took a shower, figured out what clothes to wear, made a mental image of what he had to do that day. Little did he know how that day would end. Little did he know how that day would end. And little did we know how incendiary his murder would be, both literally and figuratively for this country over this last week. Should we, should we be surprised? Absolutely not. Absolutely not. This is what we've been dealing with since we can remember. So, I got to thinking about, so this country started with a group of people who voluntarily left their country to be in a better place, to get away from social and religious persecution, and they took a risk and they came to a new place. You would think that was a good beginning, but not too long after that, the same people took other people from a country involuntarily, shipped them across an ocean, many of them died, and I don't know, should you wish to die, or should you wish to survive? I'm not sure which was better. And all of a sudden, those people were transposed from people to property. That's how this relationship started. Can it ever right itself? Right now, history says, no, it can't right itself. So, we can't accept that. You know, the mayor referred to Black Lives Matter, which will be a, a saying that will go down for dozens and decades and hundreds of years in our culture, but I'm going to go back to another phrase that started in the 60s, "We shall overcome." So, "We shall overcome" apparently was first recognized as a gospel tune, and then it was used as a labor tune in 1945 with a group of cigar workers who were on strike in a factory in South Carolina. And then the 60s, of course, brought us Pete Seeger and Joan Baez, and I will smile, because those are my peeps, I'm sorry. And that song became the iconic symbol of non-violent civil rights in this country. We shall overcome someday. Shall we? Let's hope so. And I want to share one other personal story, well, semi-personal story. So, I went, I started at Cornell in '71, and most people would not know that one of the most indelible days for Cornell University was April 18th of 1969. Maybe even Jerry doesn't know this, I'll find out. When a group of African-American students called Black Activists of the Day took over the Student Union Rilla Straight Hall for 36 hours with rifles, and they did it on Parents Weekend, and they did it to raise awareness in 1969, to raise awareness to racial injustice, as they experienced it at Cornell University. So, the leader of that movement was named Thomas Jones, and Thomas Jones was awarded the Alumni Citizen of the Year Award in 2017 from Cornell University. So, can we get there from here? Let's hope so, but it's going to take a lot of work, and it's going to take a lot more suffering before we do, I'm afraid. And thank you for your time.
Alderman Green.
Thank you very much. I will just speak on the reservoir trails, excuse me, reservoir trails, see, it's hard to say as much as it is to spell, apparently. So, on the reservoir trail, I'm just going to pick on from that. They are wonderful. My wife and I have been up there at least twice already, you know, I've tried different trails, tried them on different entrances, so I have received some questions when I was up there, is this trail open just because there are gates? That's just to prevent vehicles from driving on them at the entrances?
There was one, uh, I mean, just to...
Yeah, I was going to ask you if you...
Yeah. Yeah, one of the gates was, was locked inadvertently. All of the gates are locked for automobiles, but there should be a side gate that's open for pedestrians and bikes to go through. So, one, I think the Highland, one of the Highland Lakes entrances was, was locked, but has been reopened.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, and I was just going to say, I did tell the person, yes, these are open, and please enjoy them, and they certainly did, they brought their entire family on. So, well done to everyone who worked on those, and I pray that everyone safely enjoys them and keeps them clean for many years to come. With the unfortunate matter at hand, and the state of our, our country in that, I had to think a little bit about what I could say. I'm a straight, white, Christian male, who is the son and grandson of police officers. When it comes to someone who is high on an oppression list, I usually hit the very bottom, and that's just not something that should be okay. Shouldn't matter the, my ethnicity, my religion, my sex, my sexual orientation. Everyone should have a voice. No one's voice should be silenced. Driving over here, I was thinking about, as someone who's very interested in, in history, and that word comes important into play, but I've been fortunate enough to visit a few times, it's the Henry Ford Museum in Detroit, Michigan, and, uh, Dearborn, Michigan. And that specific museum has a really important exhibit on civil rights and the civil rights movement, going back to its earliest days. And right at the center of that exhibit is a bus, and it's quite an interesting bus, you would think for a, a museum, but that bus is the bus that Rosa Parks sat on. As a, as a visitor in that museum, you can sit right in the seat that Rosa Parks sat on. No, it wasn't at the front of the bus, wasn't at the back of the bus, it was at the middle of the bus. So, what was the big deal, a lot of people think, but then you hear her voice come over. The emotion, the story that she tells of that day that changed, or should have changed, the way people think, and the way people act towards people of color, towards women, and it's, it's really eye-opening. And I just pray that these issues do become history. Stay in a museum where we learn from our past to only change our future, where my son will grow up learning about these in history books, not on the daily news. To everyone who marched yesterday, everyone who's, who's marching across the nation, who's doing peaceful protests, who's crying out in need, to the police departments that are doing their absolute best, like the Middletown Police Department, to stand in solidarity, I stand with you. I will stand with you, and I will stand up for your right to speak your mind, to peacefully protest, and to live a life that you deserve to live. One thing I have seen online is a call to defund police departments. That's not going to solve this problem, and I am very thankful that the chief came up here tonight and mentioned how we are spending the funding we're getting. And I think that's a really important message, and thank you, Chief, for, for coming up and saying that. It's not about defunding departments. There are police departments like our very own, who, yes, maybe there are instances where they need to learn, and Chief, you're so very humble to say that, you know, we're not perfect, and it's, it's understandable. Nobody is perfect. But to defund and not fund programs that help educate officers on how to interact with the community, well, that would just be a mistake. So, I will support, again, anyone who's marching peacefully, and our police department, who is working so hard to work with the community, black, white, man, woman, straight, gay, Christian, Jewish, doesn't matter, we're all human. Thank you very much.
Alderman Tobin.
Good job. Tough acts to follow, some really well-said remarks and very, I could feel the emotion, which I think the whole country is going through. As far as the school budget, I haven't gotten my envelope either. I know that statewide, there was a company that was supposed to send the envelopes with the budgets, that mean, to process a lot of school districts, and they ran out of envelopes, and so now, a lot of districts are scrambling to get their ballots out. I'm not sure if that happened in Middletown, but I know it's happened to several districts throughout the state. So, but it is June 9th, and I did watch the school board debate tonight, so I think they'll have it recorded on YouTube. As far as the trail, I haven't got a chance to get up there yet, but I look forward to it. I did catch the tail end of the, the rally the other day, and, you know, I share in the, you know, with my fellow aldermen, the, the condemnation of the public display of britt- know, with my fellow aldermen, the condemnation of the public display of brutality against George Floyd, and, you know, I understand the anger and frustration, but I think Martin Luther King said that, you know, the rioting is the voice of the unheard, but he also said that violence begets violence, so I think, you know, we can't become a violent protest, it doesn't serve anybody. As far as white privilege or privilege, I mean, I'll share a personal story. You know, normally you get pulled over, you get your, you know, they check your license, you either get a ticket, you get a warning, you leave. When I was in college, I was, I worked at Friendly's as a waiter, and the boss asked me to stay late, so I stayed late, and I missed the bus, so I got a ride home with the line cooks, who were people of color, African-Americans, and we got pulled over. But this time, you know, I'm in the backseat, we all got ripped out of the car, placed up on the hood, searched, license checked, and I went through my head like, wow, this is what people are talking about. I've been pulled over before, I've never been pulled out of my car and searched, so I mean, I can, I understand the frustration. But like the mayor said, you know, a rally or, you know, a protest without an actual movement is just, is just a lot of noise. So we need to push for, you know, legislative victories, and vote for people that are gonna represent us. And like Alderman Johnson said, a lot, this all goes back to Jamestown, I mean, where they legally, through law, stripped people of their rights, their human rights, and we see people in the streets that are being, their human rights are being violated, so we need to step up as a society, and I'm glad to hear that. But I do condemn with the violence. I think, you know, rioting and destroying personal property is not the right way to go. It just helps the people that are oppressing the color, you know, African-American community and people of color. So I mean, it just, it's a bad look, so I would, please do not break anything, destroy, or vandalize our city. I'd ask you to do that. And I agree with Alderman Kleiner, you know, it's like Halloween, you know, when you go for trick-or-treating, most people are out to have a good time, but when they, you know, that's the reason why we have a curfew, but sometimes mischief makers come out at night, so I definitely agree with that. And finally, I'd like to say hats off to the police chief, you know, I saw that he got praise from Congressman Maloney, I've been hearing it throughout the region, how the protest went, and I think that's because of what you talked about, this principle of policing, I call it smart policing. You know, it could have turned out a lot differently if we, you know, the police showed up with, you know, dressed like gladiators and big, you know, armored cars, and threatened the crowd. It could have happened totally differently, like we see in other cities, but I think all the things that the chief has been doing in the department, and the mayor's, and the, you know, the president's, you know, guidance, we're seeing that, you know, the smart policing, the community is, you know, is on our side, and I think a lot of decisions that are made intentionally, and especially the training that make that happen. And as far as the language from the chief, I think we have, you know, a president, unfortunately, that has made this, some people think it's okay to make these, to speak like this, and it's not okay. You know, if you're in a position of management or leadership, that's unbecoming, and I'm glad to hear that people of Walk Hill have, or the Washington Heights Fire Department have taken action, and I encourage, you know, the people in Monticello, I know there's a DPW supervisor who's using the N-word in their garage to talk about another employee. So, you know, language does matter, and it's not okay. And so I'm glad that, as Middletown as a community, we're stepping up, and, you know, it's a pleasure to work with all of you. I totally agree. Thank you.
Alderman Massey?
Karen, I feel sorry for you. I know you have to transcribe all these.
You'll be ready in December.
Jerry, I'm surprised you let June 14th go for me. Flag Day, thank you. And please remember that June 14th is Flag Day. I always remember it, because it's the day I was discharged from the service. I want to congratulate the Middletown Police Department for the outstanding job they did yesterday regarding the protest and the march, placing downtown Middletown. The organizers and protesters, thank you for the way you handled yourself, the entire situation. We had a peaceful and open dialogue, and I can tell you, as an elected official, I heard you, and I am proud, and I was proud to be part of that march. We can move forward. We happen to be very fortunate to be living in the city of Middletown, where there are really some real good people. We have a great police department, and a council, and a mayor that listens, and we can move forward, and hopefully we will. And then finally, I want to end with, I know the mayor always brings this up at the end of his, any talk that he gives, that census, it is very important. Please fill out the census forms, and the next step is register to vote, and then go out and actually vote. That is extremely important. That's where you get your voices heard. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Audit?
Mr. President?
I'm sorry. Mr. President, I move the accounts to be audited, and the claims to be adjusted, and the city treasurer to be authorized to issue warrants for their payment.
President responsible, Alderman Massey, second by Alderman Kleiner. Roll.
Chairman Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion to pass this.
Move for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Aye.